No, I didn't know.
Let me see how many we have. It was probably about 15. And it was really informal.
Never mind, it's under city actions. So just one.
We should have it.
But he will.
I'm saying eight twenty-five.
Uh huh, what about him?
Well.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, Mabel. Mabel. Mabel.
I got an envelope with his name on it and that was it. But I didn't get a case. I don't know why. But I mean, it was kind of. But I don't know.
Oh dear.
Good evening and welcome to the May fourteenth meeting of the Newport News City Council. We ask that you are here to speak tonight that you would mark on the card that you're given the item to which you wish to address. The item you wish to address is not on the card. We ask that you mark. Item I, matters germane to the business of council. We have a light system on our podium. Each person is given three minutes to speak. After you give your name and address, the green light will go off and the yellow light will appear at the end of two minutes. At the end of three minutes, the red light will appear and we ask that you take your seat immediately. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would silence your phones. As usual, we will have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance tonight, and tonight we invite Reverend Terry Edwards from St. Augustine's Episcopal Church to deliver an invocation to the city council. Afterwards, I will lead us in the pledge. For both, will you please stand?
Good evening, members of the council, city officials, and citizens of this great city of Newport News. Please join me as I pray for our city leaders. Gracious Lord, Creator and Sustainer of all, your will is to seek good and to be gracious, and your law is to uphold your truth. Bless the council and their work to lead the city of Newport News. Support their efforts to work together for the prosperity of this city so that all men and women, boys and girls, from every neighborhood, will experience the opportunity to develop cultural pride, the opportunity to develop their individual talents, and to know that the fulfillment of their liberties as citizens of Newport News is this council's greatest goal. We pray for an end to violence on our streets. We pray for justice for those who are marginalized due to race, gender, and economics. And we pray, oh Lord, your protection for all first responders who daily risk their lives for the citizens of this city. In faith, we pray to you. Amen.
Please join me in honoring my pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two presentations this evening, and for the first, I want to ask Bill Massey, Director of Peninsula Agency on Aging, to join me, Angelia Edwards, Program Coordinator of NNPT, PRT, Active Lifestyles, and Bobby Hutchco, Program Supervisor of Active Lifestyles, and Megan Reed, Superintendent of Recreation Programs, please join me. Good evening. Whereas the city of Newport News includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through diverse life experiences, whereas the city of Newport News is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And whereas the city of Newport News recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas the city of Newport News can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by involving older adults in community events and other activities, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Older Americans Month and encourage every resident to take time this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community. I also urge the citizens to participate in special activities provided by the Peninsula Aging Agency on Aging, the Newport News Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Active Lifestyles, and other service agencies in our community.
Mayor Price, I'm the designated spokesperson. I did not presume to speak for the delegation. But you'll also be happy to know they provided me with prepared remarks which are very brief. But on behalf of the Peninsula Agency on Aging and Newport News Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Active Lifestyles Programs, we would like to thank you, Mayor Price, and members of city council for recognizing May 2019 as Older Americans Month. And in doing so, you're validating the senior citizens for their commitment, caring, and contributions in enriching the lives of the citizens of Newport News. And I'll take one moment of privilege and thank you and the city council for supporting particularly our Meals on Wheels program. We really appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Second, accepting this proclamation will be Chief Jeffrey Johnson, Captain Doug Crowson, Captain Eric Gaskins, Captain Raymond Broomfield, and Captain James Maston. Captains, captains, captains. It's a commercial, isn't it? Whereas Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the City of Newport News Fire Department EMS teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency room nurses, emergency room physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-the-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the City of Newport News Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Teams respond to approximately 30,000 calls for medical services annually and engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services Week 2019 theme, Beyond the Call, underscores the commitment and dedication of EMS providers who serve their communities. Now therefore, I, McKinley L. Price, Mayor of the City of Newport News, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 19 through May 25, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of the Emergency Medical Services providers and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
So I'd like to thank the mayor, council, city manager, that give us the ability to go out and take care of the community in the way we do. And while we're here accepting this, we represent the 370-plus members of the fire department that are out there working every day protecting the community. So again, thank you very much. It's important to recognize the work they're doing, so I will continually praise them in public and praise them in private. And again, thank you for the support.
Okay, we are now at public hearings. Page E five. Page five, E one, is a request for the city council to receive public comments on the effective real estate property tax rate as it relates to the recommended fiscal year 2020 operating budget, and then close the public hearing and take no further actions. This public hearing is required by state code when a locality estimates an increase in the property tax levies greater than 1% for the upcoming fiscal year. The current tax rate is 1.122 cents per $100 of assessed value of real property. The lowered tax rate necessary to offset the increased assets would be $1.18 cents per $100 of assessed value. The difference between the lowered tax rate and the proposed tax rate is 0.0321 per $100. The difference is 2.7% and will be known as the effective tax rate increase. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price. Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Item F contains the following items. Minutes of the special joint meeting of the Newport News City Council and the Newport News School Board for April 16th, minutes of the work session of April 23rd, minutes of the regular meeting of April 23rd. A resolution of recognition for Pastor Ivan Harris for his 31st pastoral anniversary and his retirement as pastor of the First Baptist Church Denby. Do any of these need to be removed by council? If not, a motion, consent agenda items F1 through F4, all-inclusive, is in order.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Four.
Councilwoman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Okay, item G1, matter manager.
Yes, this is a request to adopt ordinances to enact the city manager's fiscal year 2020 operating budget. There are five ordinances, and council is to take action on each separately. The first ordinance is amending City Code, Chapter 40, Taxation, Article 2, Real Estate Taxes, Division 1, General Lease, Section 40-12, levied amount, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Against.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, six one.
Page eighty-eight, item G2, matter manager.
The second item is an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 37.1, Stormwater Management, Article 2, Service Charge, Section 37.1-14, Service Charge, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Against.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, six one.
Number three is ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 33, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Article 2, Connections to Public Sewer, Sections 13-19, Charges, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Against.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, six one.
Item four is an ordinance providing for the adoption of a classification and pay plan for employees of the city of Newport News, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Four.
Councilwoman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Last ordinance is an ordinance adopting the budget and appropriating funds to operate the city of Newport News for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, and I recommend approval.
We have some cards for this. Call them in the order they would give it. Matthew Gray, I believe. Matthew D.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vic, sorry. My name is Matthew Degrave. My address is 10 Democ Avenue, Newport News, and I just wanted to come tonight and say a few words about the school funding levels. The last meeting that I attended was actually my first meeting here. And one of the folks that I met with the Newport News Education Association is looking for a permanent increase in funding. I believe at the time it was 2.7 million dollars. I stand behind them and request the funding at permanent levels of 2.7 million dollars every year, which may change each year, obviously, because I have a student that is in Newport News schools, and I believe that children are our future. And this is really important to get this right. We need after-school programs and we need places for our children to go when, you know, parents are working and stuff like that. And I believe that increase in funding would allow some of these programs to continue and new programs to take place, and it would also allow for hiring of more teachers. This way, we could have smaller classroom sizes, which means more one-on-one time for students that are in these, in schools today. That's really all I have. Thank you for your time. Again, have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Shemaine Sutton. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. To Mayor Price and the city council, my name is Shemaine Sutton. My address is 5401 Roanoke Avenue, Newport News, Virginia, 23605. I will be reading a letter from Dr. Willard Maxwell and his absence, who is the president of the Newport News branch of the NAACP. As a recently elected president of the Newport News National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, it is my privilege and duty to communicate on behalf of an organization that has persevered and fought for the rights of disadvantaged people since 1909. The mission of the NAACP is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. That said, my words have been carefully weighed to not only align with the mission of this great organization, but also to reflect my values as a current Newport News representative and a former school educator. First and foremost, access to quality education for all citizens is a right, not a privilege. In many cities around this country, our public schools are tasked with the challenge of educating the children of those who are the least connected to the wealth and opportunities of our society. These mothers and fathers rely on our system of education to provide a future for their children. However, in many cases, they are the least likely to advocate for changes when the educational system is not succeeding in their mission. Since beginning my tenure as president, I have followed some of the city council and school board deliberations around school funding. In doing so, I have yet to hear any consistent language or seen any actions that have convinced me that our current practices will lead to better future conditions for the students and families who rely on Newport News public schools. While much has been said, it is the fact that we have moved, it has moved me to address this body in writing. It is a fact that the city has recommended level funding for the school division for the past two years. It is a fact that while the city has experienced economic growth in revenue in the past few years, the school division has not equitably shared in that growth. It is also a fact, based on the information provided to the council on April 16th by Dr. Parker at your last joint meeting with the school board, the amount of dollars in the school division budget not allocated to salaries and benefits has decreased since 2009 from 60 million dollars, equaling 20% of the school division operating budget, to 39 million dollars, equaling 13% of the operating budget. When I inquire how the school division budget has grown by roughly 3 million dollars since 2009, but the amount of dollars used for operational expenses such as instructional materials, utilities, paper, and fuel for buses has decreased by 21 million dollars, I was told that those dollars have been moved into salary benefits due to limited funding for employee raises and new positions over a 10-year period. This is unacceptable. While I believe the recent efforts to improve communication have been helpful, I am encouraging both the school board and city council to take on the challenge. Thank you.
And we each received a copy of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Rhonda Wagner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm throwing things around. I apologize. Tonight, I am the messenger, and I will leave you with some facts. The National Education Association, the union, recently published the data on teacher salaries. Over the last decade, average educator pay has declined when controlled for inflation. Thank you. Virginia ranks 32nd in the country for average teacher pay. This is 8,483 dollars below the national average. Virginia is the 11th richest state in the country. One out of five teachers must take another job to make ends meet. 71% of people think teachers are not paid enough. 16% less funding goes to districts with the highest poverty. The Red Fred Movement spreading across the country is a response to the budget cuts resulting in overcrowded classrooms, excuse me, classrooms, student inequity, and severely underpaid educators and staff. Public school employees are fighting back and demanding lawmakers address better pay and school funding. We are raising our voices together for our students, for our schools, and for ourselves as educators. That's why we are wearing red. The VEA, a union, organized the over 4,000-person rally in Richmond this past January as a result. As the president of the NNEA, a union, we condemn your vote. Thank you.
August Bullock.
Good evening. Good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, esteemed members of the council. My name is August Bullock. I live at 906 Center Avenue.
Would you raise that mic, though? Thank you, sir.
My name is August Bullock, and I live at 906 Center Avenue here in the city. First of all, I'm a product of the Newport News Public Schools and had the extreme pleasure of starting my career as an educator here in Newport News in 1974. As a teacher, it was indeed an honor to address students and to see the difference that you make while teaching. A role model that came up lately was Kristin McCullough. Her theme, "I teach, I touch the future." It is indeed a statement that is associated with her, and of course, we know that as a member of the Challenger Space Shuttle, she met with untimely passing. But we are at opportunity now with our budgets to touch the future. What will our children remember about us? We see, back to Kristin McCullough, we see that she was a, she's remembered as an effective educator and had a theme that was always challenging us to continue to do what is right for kids. The research that is around and speaking about in reference to student achievement and underfunding speaks to the fact that funded schools tend to be better schools. The Learning Policy Institute speaks to that in great detail in their study. With the rising operating costs and adjusting for inflation, inflation, and other types of changes, level funding really winds up being a cut for the schools. So we certainly urge you to look at the school system's budget, look at their rationale and their reasons and their needs, but most importantly, think about what is best for kids and always doing what is best for them. When teachers, and as a teacher, when policymakers make cuts, we are often the ones that try to insulate these cuts from our children, which means we go deeper into our pockets, into our hearts, to buy so they will not be without. And certainly, this is a condition of the profession, it's not a complaint, it's just how it is. But as a policymaker, when you make your decisions, you need to consider that because that is happening. Teachers and staff are the ones that continue to make it better for children and let support them in every way that we possibly can. Thank you for your time, and remember to continue to do what is best for kids.
Samuel Erie Jr. Samuel Erie Jr. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Price, City Council members. The Red for Ed campaign from the National Education Association is not a flash-in-the-pan event. It is a movement based on the unmet needs of the public education system. The governmental system has underfunded public education at every level for so long that it's adversely affected the entire system. When I say it has adversely affected the entire system, I mean it. Let's start with the significant drop in the number of high school students expressing an interest in becoming teachers. The impact of that drop in interest is a significant drop-off in the number of college students entering teacher preparation programs in college. The turnover of teachers is fifty percent in the first five years of teaching. Nationwide and in the Commonwealth, the turnover rate is extremely costly. The question should be, what is causing the large turnover? Most teachers enter their profession highly motivated to make a difference in the lives of their students. Teachers are moving out of their profession due to a lack, due to an overemphasis on testing, the consistent multi-level attacks on teachers, their unions, and the public education system. Reformers have brought about the defunding of the neediest schools in favor of charter schools, the use of vouchers, to siphon off public school money. The students cheapest to educate are recruited to what is billed as a better educational alternative. The students that are most costly, unwanted, to educate are left in the public education system. We're talking English language learners, students with special needs, and a large number of the economically disadvantaged. Each of these categories of students has a higher associated cost in education. If these students are disaggregated, what is the true cost of per pupil expenditure of the remaining regular, average students? Typically, those who can afford it least are the ones underfunded the most. The reason is that we have an at-risk additional funding from the state is based on clearly established needs. Those needs have not diminished. Staying on the topic of students with disabilities, in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the federal government passed down an educational mandate, mandate as a rule passed down to be implemented by others, without the associated money needed to properly implement the program. The bottom line is the federal government has fallen woefully short of meeting its obligations for the children of this country. The current trend is that it will continue for the next two years. The states and localities must fill in the gap to fulfill the mandate and meet students' needs. In nineteen sixty-eight, the last massive teacher movement, there were about four major events with over a hundred thousand participants. In twenty eighteen, there have been eight events, four statewide events, involving more than four hundred thousand participants. Momentum is building in twenty nineteen because of the nationwide gap between those with similar education backgrounds and teachers. Virginia is the third worst in the country. Newport News has a hand in that. This is the reason that we must push for the full funding of the school board's budget. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. In adopting the budget, I hope that this council has decided that it is fully funding the school division's budget requests. First, without options. The request is not excessive, and it's necessary for us to retain a first-class school system in the city of Newport News. If this budget that you have now does not fully fund the school budget request, I ask that you vote no on adoption.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am John McMillan. I live at forty-three Ridgewood Parkway in the city of Newport News. As a former school board member, I have some idea of the amount of effort that both you and the school board have to expend to make the decisions on a budget that will support our entire city. I thank you for all that effort and the decisions that you have to make. Everything that needs to be said has been said. I support the school division's full-funded budget. I like to watch trends to see how things are progressing. Examples: Over the last ten years, our city revenue is up by some seventy point four million dollars. That means that, I'm sorry, the city's contribution to the school system over the same period is up six point two million dollars. That means over the ten-year period, that ten-year period, eight point eight percent of our economic growth has gone to our schools. Since two thousand sixteen, the city's revenue is up twenty-one point seven million, and the contribution to the school budget is up by seven tenths of a million dollars, or three point two percent of the increase. That trend shows that for the first eight years, the schools shared in the economic growth at a rate of eleven percent. Now, over the last two years, we're at three percent. Another trend is the percentage of general fund that is the city's contribution to the schools. For the ten-year period, from oh five to fourteen, that average was twenty-seven point one percent. In other words, the school system received, on average, that percentage of the city's budget. For the past three years, the average has dropped to twenty-five point three percent. And in twenty eighteen, it will be twenty-four point three, or was twenty-four point three. Doesn't sound like much of a difference, but interesting is the fact that each one percent of change equals four point nine million dollars. One last trend I know that you've seen during this process this year is the six-year comparison of school system raises and city raises. School system at ten point five percent and city at fifteen point two five. Everything that needs to be said has already been said. In fact, these comments that I've just gone over were prepared and delivered in two thousand seventeen. Same issues, little progress. I firmly
Thank you, sir.
I firmly believe that we all want what is best for our city.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Everything that needs to be said has been said. We hope that you hear. Thank you.
Yeah, David Yancey. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is David Yancey, I live at four two three Pin Oak Road, and I have the distinct honor of representing the city of Newport News in the Virginia House of Delegates, and I serve on the Education Committee. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, this year in the Virginia General Assembly, we were able to pass an important budget in regards to teacher pay raises. This is something that's very critical, not just for the city of Newport News, but for teachers throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia, and especially in our regard to city of Newport News. And I can speak to this as a volunteer high school coach. Many of the teachers with whom I've had the opportunity to speak with just this year alone, when they came to Richmond, stressed to me how important this item is. So, Mr. Mayor, as I come before you today to speak on behalf of this item, I would just let you know that this is something that all of us worked hard together on, in both chambers and in both sides, to be able to put together this budget this year, to be able to help all teachers in the Commonwealth, and obviously, especially for the city of Newport News teachers. Mr. Mayor, as I would further add, that this is not just an investment for our teachers, but also for our schools, is for capital funding for our schools and the needs for our new schools, that I know for city of Newport News to be able to continue to provide an excellent education, these are the funds that are going to be necessary that will begin that investment moving forward. So, Mr. Mayor, as I come here tonight, I speak on behalf of teachers for the pay raises, but I also come to assure you and to members of council, that is, I will continue to work very diligently with both members, in both chambers, on both sides, to continue to work hard to make certain that the city of Newport News gets the money it needs in the school budgets from the state of Virginia, to be able to assure going forward that we can provide for teacher pay raise salaries, to get the teachers the monies they need and they deserve, but also to get the schools the money they need from the state to continue to do the capital investments that they need for the new schools at the city of Newport News, to continue to be the great community that we all love. Mr. Mayor, Mr. and Council, I thank you for your time and appreciate your support. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you. I just do want to say thank you because ever since I've been on this council since two thousand eight, and the state funding has been, has decreased for education, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Mary Voss, Newport News Public Schools graduate, teacher, and parent, and a member of the Newport News Education Association.
And can you state your address?
Three fifty Williamsburg Court, Newport News, Virginia, two three six oh six. Sitting in on this afternoon's city council work session, a couple of things struck me. Number one, the categorical funding that Councilwoman Woodbury suggests every meeting would be terrible for the already underfunded school system because it would force N N P S to give back money at the end of each year, money that we currently spend on student technology, maintenance and repair for our school buildings that are an average of fifty years old. To suggest that our underfunded school system give money back to the city at the end of the year instead of spending it on these desperately needed one-time expenses doesn't make sense. If the mayor's committee to consider school funding long-term is going to seriously consider categorical funding as a legitimate option, then this committee is going in the wrong direction. The past three budget cycles, N N P S teachers, staff, and parents and community members have come before council advocating for better school funding, and the solution to that is more school funding, not less. Also, I was disappointed to hear the city manager claim this afternoon at the work session that her proposed budget fully funds Newport News Public Schools, and that is just not true. Two point four million in cash capital is one-time funding that will only fund one year of the proposed N N P S budget. What will happen in year two, when N N P S still needs to pay for the recurring two percent salary increase and for the recurring cost of desperately needed new positions like school counselors, school security officers, and ESL teachers and staff for our city's rapidly growing English as a second language population? Will city council members act surprised because they believed when the city manager claimed that two point four million in one-time cash capital funding can somehow magically fund two percent raises and new salary positions for the school system long-term, year after year, in recurrent funding? This two point four million in cash capital is not full funding. It is a temporary Band-Aid that allows the city manager and whoever else supports this budget to save face and to avoid the issue of our underfunded schools and our children not receiving the funding they need and deserve. Is council going to make some real change this year and push back on the city manager's yearly budgets that stagnate city funding for our public schools since two thousand thirteen, and that this year, even worse, level funding, a zero percent increase for our public schools? It's time to question some of the information you're getting from those who claim that Newport News Public Schools don't deserve more funding until our students pass their SOLs. Let me tell you something, as a public school teacher, our children who are struggling to pass their SOLs deserve more funding, not less. Please vote against this budget that does not fully fund our schools. As taxpayers and homeowners in Newport News, our children deserve better, and our hard-working N N P S teachers and staff deserve better.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Please vote against this budget that does not fully fund our public schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I begin with a bit of grace, it seems. Thanks for having me here. My name is John Shiflett. I'm in one oh one Meadow Brook, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm here representing as a member of the Newport News Education Foundation and a former product of the Newport News Public Schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to specifically address a thanks to Mr. Jenkins for his comments and his perspective with regard to supporting public education from the perspective of understanding what's actually going on in your words and your deeds. We really, really see that leadership and think it's important. I would like to encourage the city manager and the members of the council to consider the views he has expressed and consider a better way forward to adequately address the financial needs of the public schools. Operations, maintenance, and strategic improvements all need to be addressed. We need to get this done. I encourage you to be courageous, take the necessary time, get the right information, and aggressively pursue a way to a brighter future. Do not keep the status quo. This isn't an academic exercise or an accounting exercise. It's about investing in the city's future and its prosperity through the youth and its future workforce members. We need you to lead the way to getting this done. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Renee Sykes Lovett, twenty-five Riverlands Drive, Newport News, Virginia. Good evening again, Mayor, Council. I wanted to say congratulations to everyone, because I know you had part in getting that reward today, or yesterday, I think it was. And I wanted to let you know, I'm really, really excited and anticipating that a lot of things are going to come out of this, and I'm looking forward to seeing great things. We'll get great things, like a new Huntington, a new housing area. I cannot wait. I saw the model before with the housing on the top and stores at the bottom, that looked really great. I'm really excited, and I can't wait to see what you do next. So, keeping Huntington in the parks and the teachers and everything else in mind, I'm looking forward.
Jane D. Vincenzo.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jane D. Vincenzo, I live at three oh three Park Place in Newport News, Virginia. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak before council about something that is so important to our city, and I appreciate all the time and energy you've all put into this, and again, especially appreciate Councilman Jenkins and your wisdom and new perspective. I, I'm sorry, oh, I thought I heard something. Friends, I think we all want the exact same thing. We want a thriving city that attracts workers, employers, young families, where folks even want to stay after they retire. We have so many strengths along history, diversity, that is an incredible strength, geography, several large employers, and so many caring, friendly people. I know you are all caring people, and I believe in that, and I'm here, as are others, because we care too. And enough, I care enough to be here and not sit on the sidelines anymore. We all desperately need to change our view of our assets and what we value. Where we spend says what is important to us. I know this very well as a financial advisor. I want to live in a city that people clamor to be in and to move to. I want families, graduates, businesses, all to win, and I want Realtors saying, "You have to be in a Newport News school district." And why not? Nothing's impossible. We need to be visionaries, not critics. We all win, when our most valuable resources, if not most, our most valuable resources are strong, supported, and prized. Let's make our city the envy of everyone in the state, with top-notch resources for our schools, teachers lining up to work here, well-paid staff who are all appreciated and respected, students transferring in from other areas to be here, and employers hoping to land a graduate from one of our many innovative programs. In a matter of minutes, I found over twenty studies that reached the same conclusion. Local spending on schools has a huge impact on outcomes in their cities, reducing poverty, increasing wages and salaries long-term. It takes decades, not minutes, to make these changes. When you cut school budgets and leave them level and say they're the same, schools lose out, but our city really loses out. And we are creating a vision, and today, you're deciding things that are going to impact the city- and today you're deciding things that are going to impact the city in one year, three years, five years and 10 years from now. Remember your legacy, too. Our school budgets that grew saw increases, as I said, and reduces, reduce, increases in salaries to teachers helps with retention, and experienced teachers are very valuable. My greatest concern is that what is considered good economic times right now, we're cutting school funding, what are we going to do in the next recession?
Awadi Stiff.
Hi, good evening. My name is Awadi Stiff, and I reside in Seven Hole Street, Newport News, Virginia 23601. I'm a graduate of Warwick High School and now attend V C U. I thought that it was very important for the city council to hear from a student's perspective the urgency to fully fund the Newport News Public School budget request. It saddens me to hear that yet again, the city manager and council are cutting funding for teachers, school faculty improvements and programs. Study after study shows a direct correlation between expenditures by cities on education and decline in poverty, and increase in wages and earnings of the students who are in schools with growing versus shrinking budgets. Why would our city keep putting our schools on the chopping block? Are students the future of our city, the teachers and the school employees, not a cornerstone to our city, our reputation, and as importantly, our values? Why would city council want to be known for doing the least possible for our schools versus the most possible? Warwick High School is crumbling around our ears. We need more counselors, staff, and to award hard-working teachers that sacrifice so much to benefit their students. Please reconsider and make school funding, repairs and teachers pay a priority and create a long-term plan for success. Thank you for your time.
Those are all the cards I have. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
I have a motion.
I hear two motions. Is there a second?
I said, so move.
I had a motion. Rather than a vote, I had wanted to make a motion.
This is the motion that's being carried. Is there a second to the motion that's been made? Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I, I just want to say to, to Dr. Parker, the school board, to the citizens, to the teachers, to everyone who's impacted by this, I do hear you. I understand your concerns, and, and I know that it's something that we all can do better. But tonight, I am going to vote for the city manager's recommended budget because just as you all do planning in your time, she does planning and her staff, and at some point, we have to think about how we get in front of the conversation instead of coming in on the tail end of the conversation. And I think a lot of thought went into the budget that the city manager recommended to us for the school board, and we are not cutting any teachers' salaries. Some of the misinformation is disturbing. We're not cutting any teachers' salaries, but I, I do look forward to working with Dr. Parker and the school board and any of the staff members to make sure that next year we do something differently. But tonight, I do support her budget, and I respect what she has recommended for us.
And may I just add as well, and the reason why I voted against what we've put on the tables thus far is due to the fact of what Councilwoman Scott said is, is, this is my third budget that we are going through, and it seems that the process is getting worse than it's getting better. And I know the recommendation from Mayor Price from last meeting with our school board and even today during our work session is that we're going to have a committee that is going to be put together in which we can alleviate going through this next year. Last year, when I sat here in the same seat, I was a little upset about the misinformation that was going back and forth, and now it seems like we're still going through the same cycle as I had some recommendations how we could not go through that same phase of what we're dealing with today. So, until we can get that in order, I'm going to have to vote against any budget because of the fact that's not really worthy, clap-worthy, because I feel we got to do a better job all around together, and we shouldn't be at this point. We shouldn't be at a point where, you know, it's been this divisiveness each budget cycle because one group is thinking one thing and another group is saying another thing. We shouldn't be there. We shouldn't be, we are city officials, city leaders. We should be able to put what our priorities are in order and be able to move forwardly, forward in a manner that's respectful and civil, and this isn't a way to do it.
That's right.
And until we can get that, until we can get that into a, until we can get that protocol processes in order where we could streamline this in which we want the school board, which I feel after this second year of going through this, that we'll have a process in order based on what Mayor Price has recommended and, and not be sitting at the same seat next year having everybody upset at one another. So, that's why I voted the way I voted thus far.
And I just want to add, Mr. Mayor, you know, the misinformation, we're not cutting the school funding. And just, and along with what you're saying, Councilmember Harris, it is very disturbing to have the two governing bodies of the city not being able to communicate in an effective way. And when I met with Dr. Parker, when I met with you in September, our meeting that we had, you know, you seemed like a different person now than from September, what you laid out on the table, what you wanted to see in this council, and, and the school board is totally different than what we have at this current point. And we're not cutting the funding, and the city council does not give school board member, of, of school employees raises. The school board decides that along with the superintendent. So, no matter what money you give, they, if they count it a priority to give raises, they will do it out of the money. Additionally, this year, there are additional funds, millions of dollars from the state, as Delegate Yancey just mentioned, to help increase the school budget. So, with that, I am going to support the school budget, I mean, this, our budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I believe the request, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was 113 million point three, 113.3 million, and you were funded at 113.3 million. The reason I suggested categorical was just in one area, to put a certain amount in so the teachers would get and staff would get the raises they deserve. That is a decision of the school, superintendent and the school board, not ours, as Vice Mayor Vick just said. And I want to see raises for the teachers, decent raises, but because that is the most important thing. Putting more money into a school, it was so interesting that somebody said about the, the condition of some of our schools, and you're right, they're old. But guess who? Every parent wants their kid to go to Hilton, and it's the oldest school in our system.
That's right.
And so, you know, I'm not, I, when I first ran in, when I was on the school board, what I wanted to see was this be the education city. That's what I wanted to be known as. I didn't want realtors telling me, "Send us to York County because we don't want to be in Newport News." That was the last thing I wanted, and it's still the last thing I want. But we have got to come together as reasonable people and discard the rhetoric that is not true. You have been funded at the same thing you requested, and where that comes from is up to us, how we do it. We have to take from different pots sometimes, just like you do as a school system. And I, I really, there are 5,000 less children in the school system right now than the work when I was on the school board, and the budget is much, much higher than we had to work with. And we did get extra state funding. Thank you very much, Delegate Yancey, for fighting for us. But I, I would like for everybody to take a deep breath and realize that this achieves nothing accusing each other and tearing each other apart. And it's a terrible, terrible example for our children.
Ms. Mayor, I would like to say, I'd just like to read my comments. As an educator and realizing all the work that goes into preparing our children to become college, career and citizen-ready, I say thank you to each one of you. Thank you to the school administration. Thank you to the building administrators. Thank you to the bus drivers. Thank you to the custodial staff. Thank you to the parent-teacher specialists. Thank you to the library staff. Thank you to the graduation coaches. Thank you to, to the professional school counselors. Thank you to the crossing guards. Thank you to the teacher assistant. Thank you to the nutrition staff. Thank you to the school security staff. Thank you to the athletic coaches. Thank you to all support staff that I have not named. Thank you to all of you. I want our schools to be the best that they can be, all accredited, representative of a stellar public school system. Because of this, I would like to encourage the teachers and other support staff to lobby from a position of advocacy rather than being an adversary. I encourage you to engage your state legislators who sit on the House Education Committee to move in the positive direction to bring K-12 funding above the pre-recession levels. Because I believe that our children are valuable, education is paramount, and the city needs substantial revenue to serve all residents in the city. It would be important that from this point forward, we as a city should also send a message to our state legislators that more has to be given to the localities in order to fund the schools' needs so that not only the teachers, but all school personnel can be provided the salary that they deserve. There's much work that still has to be done to bring satisfactory funding to the schools. However, in reviewing the operating budget for the entire city, it is this point that I support the operating budget for this year so that the city can exercise fiscal responsibility to meet all the needs of all the residents of the city. And I look forward to working with the school board and Dr. Parker to make this a better process next year. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to also comment before the vote's taken. This has been a roller coaster week for me. Sir, the sign is not allowed, the signs are not allowed by ordinance. If you don't take them down, you will be removed. This has been a roller coaster week. To see teachers acting like this, to see yesterday, an elation in this chambers, something that was done nationally for our city, and then today, 24 hours later, we're back in this chambers under different circumstances. It hurts my heart. I love this city. People on this council love this city and have dedicated their lives to making it better. We've got to come up with a better process. We've got to. We're not going through this again. I'm not going through this again next year. Mr. Parker and chairman and whoever else is here representing the school board, I dedicate to you that we will make this a better process. This cannot continue. We have to have better communication. We have to have an understanding of each other's needs and resources to make this community whole. But throwing each other under the bus and pointing fingers is not something this city is going to continue, and I dedicate my endeavors to doing that for the next year. But we have to do what's physically right for the whole city, and therefore, I'm going to support this budget also. Call the roll, please. We did get a motion.
Yes, I didn't, I thought.
Motion is second.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Against.
Motion carry, 5-2.
Okay, we're H, I know H, I believe. Is that right? There are no submitted requests. And we've had, are there any other cards for comments from?
There's a number two.
I don't have that. I'm sorry.
Yes. This is an ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter 31, pensions and retirement by adding thereto a new article, namely Article 4 Line of Duty Act. I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, is there a motion, sorry?
There is a motion. I move that we amend to confirm, to conform with the state.
Okay.
On line of duty.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Motion, motion carry, 7-0.
Okay, there is no item H, and we're at citizens' comments. Are there any other cards? Antonio Thompson.
The kingdom of heaven is at hand. St. Matthew, Chapter 10, verse 7. Corporation of Newport News, I love you. My name is Antonio Thompson. Mailing address, P O Box 413, Newport News, Virginia 23607. Phone number, 757-243-7150. I must first give thanks to the Lord God Almighty in the name of Jesus Christ, Allah Akbar, and Aisalamualaikum to all the Muslims, Jews and Christians around the world. We must all come together in these times of wars and rumors of wars. In the name of Jesus Christ, President Trump, the President of the United States of America, will be re-elected in 2020. 1 Thessalonians, Chapter 4, verse 16. For the Lord himself shall descend from heaven with a shout, with the voice of the archangel Antonio Thompson, and with the trump of God, Donald Trump. And the dead in Christ shall rise first. 1 Corinthians 1552. In a moment, in the twinkling of an eye, at the last Trump, the Trump of God, Donald Trump. For the trumpet, Antonio Thompson, shall sound, and the dead shall rise first. Incorruptible, and we shall be changed. Trump, 2020. In the name of Jesus Christ, Trump, 2020. And in honor to Police Week, I give my deepest thanks from my heart for your service and sacrifice. You are all living heroes, and let us not forget the fire department as well. Thank you very much for your service. So, please support the 100% pay raise for fire and police departments and save more lives. Shut down the detention and the jails. Congratulations. And a job well done. City Council, winning a $30 million competitive grant known as the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. And thank you, President Donald Trump and HUD Secretary Ben Carter, for having the $30 million available for Newport News. May we all turn out on Election Day and re-elect President Trump, 2020. For the best is yet to come. Our work to make America great, greater and even greater for generations to come is on the horizon. Corporation of Newport News, I love you. In the name of Jesus Christ, I love you. Trump, 2020. And Woodbury, you're right. They better show some results for that scratch.
Joan Woodmore.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Price and council members, I guess my comments are kind of mute at this point because you've already made your decision about the budget. I was here to make comment about I was here to make comment about the funding for the school system, particularly for the reconstruction of Huntington Middle School. I too hope that there's a better system of working together between the city council and the school board when it comes to the funding for the education of our students. I'm trying not to be emotional, so I relied on my background in planning and make this comment. One of the calling cards for any city is the quality of life that it provides for its residents. And then that quality of life is the education of our students, the quality of the schools. Are they adequately staffed? Are they staffed with qualified personnel? Because a well-educated city is a calling card for employers, businesses, people who are looking for employment. One of the first things they want if they have children, the first thing they want to look at is, what is the school system, educational system like in that city? So if we don't fund our schools, we cannot be a calling card for businesses, recreational businesses, all kinds of services in a city to attract people to come and live. It's not just about the beautiful waterfront or the museums, whatever. Those are, I think, the second part of a decision to move to a city, is the educational system that I think is fundamental to people making decisions to come to your city. So please, and you all are all smart, you all can come up with a plan to do better with joint planning for funding of your schools and adequately funding your schools. So no more zero level funding for schools in the future. Thank you.
Lakeisha Ireland. Lakeisha, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lakeisha Ireland. I am the proud resident of 23050 Second Street. I am a parent to two awesome children who attend Newport News Public School, but more importantly, I'm an advocate for each and every student that attends Newport News Public Schools. Before I give my comments, I would like to thank the board, I mean, the council as well as the mayor, for those of you who were able to show tact under fire. You guys are elected officials, and you are to carry yourselves in a certain manner of decorum. So those of you who were able to do that, it is highly appreciated. Thank you for showing your class. My comments actually are from the minutes appeared from the meeting on April 16th of 2019, which were graciously posted on the Newport News website. And I wanted to highlight a couple of pages where you guys, and everything happens for a reason. I'm glad that I got to come after everyone else. Everything that we're talking about is already in your minutes. If you start and you look on page seven, Dr. Price actually stated that it's his belief that the future of Newport News, when not using the current budget method, he suggested the formation of a committee, which we've heard about, that it will be comprised and agreed upon, and we will look at the future needs of the city and the way it is funded. It's right here. You guys already talked about it. Then I saw a trend in your minutes. It kept saying, "There is no long-term solution. There is no long-term solution." It was mentioned four times in your document. That's on page seven. When I look on page eight, Dr. Parker also indicated that both agreed that there's no long-term solution included in this proposal. Then we go to page nine, and this is, was very evident tonight, when Councilwoman Scott shared that she hated that we keep harping on the same conversation over and over. If we do not come up with a long-term solution, we will continue to harp upon this situation over and over. I watched from home, and I tried to remain as quiet as possible. However, as it continues, I will start to come more often, as long as all my other friends who vote quite well, and we will continue to advocate for what is needed over and over. We need to come up with a long-term solution. Then on page 10, Douglas Brown mentioned that we need to have an opportunity for a long-term solution. Then we look on page 11, and Councilwoman Woodbury, she suggested that some of the teachers were beating upon council members. I don't consider it beating. I consider it passion, and their passion might not come across the right way, but it's not beating upon council members. I love education. Those who know me know how much I love education, and I love this city. So please don't take their passion as beating. They might not know how to say it the same way that I might be able to say it, but I don't think it's beating.
Thank you.
We need to come up with a long-term solution.
Janie Bazemore. Good evening.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Janie Bazemore, and I reside at 1004 Hampton Avenue in the city of Newport News. I would first of all like to say congratulations to all of those who were involved in obtaining the $30 million CNI grant. I know that everyone put in a lot of hard work, and your perseverance paid off. We know that things take time, but we are looking at a timeline of over 10 years regarding Huntington Middle School. We need to stop prolonging this matter. Why must we wait before we can even start on rebuilding Huntington when the school division has plans that we can go forth with? Why are we continuing to hold this up? As we said before, in June 2020, Huntington Middle School is going to exist only on paper, unless something is done, as currently, there would not be sixth graders going into Huntington. Huntington Middle School, it is totally unacceptable that we will exist only on paper when we have been fighting this matter for over 10 years. We need to move on getting the school reopened now. In the words of Michelle Obama, "Let's move." Let us not fail the children. The children, this area should not have to be going above Mercury Boulevard every day to attend middle school. Provide us with the necessary funding for Huntington to be rebuilt, and let's get it done now. Huntington Middle School shall rise again. Thank you for your time.
Adrian Whitcomb.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, members of city council, and everybody else here. I want to congratulate, of course, the planning department and everyone else involved in, in being able to receive that grant for the Choice Neighborhood. I would like the city to be forward-thinking in all areas, and of course, we've heard a lot tonight about every, all kinds of things. I grew up in this city, so I have a sense of what it's like to be in this city over a long period of time. I remember a time when the, when the schools were really considered to be the best on the peninsula. I remember a time when, um, when there was actually more access to the waterfront, at least where I lived. Now, when I go up along Huntington, I see all those new buildings going up in the shipyard. So the, the leaders of this city have to decide what they want in this city. And I, my suggestion was, was that you start early for next year. You don't wait until almost spring before you really get down to talking. I remember three years ago, before I even came to the city council talking about the city farm, I went to the 50th anniversary of Newport News Park. And that was in 2016, right before Memorial Day weekend. And I just inspired, it's a 50th anniversary, so the next 50 days, I'm going to take a walk in each, and take a walk in that park, and as many different parks as I could. Now, there aren't 50 parks in Newport News. I went to Hampton, Norfolk, Smithfield, and all over. My suggestion is that you spend your time in, in the parks, in the schools, in other places where you have heard needs of this city, including the buses. Take some bus rides and see what that's like. That's how you learn what a city is like. I, I know it's, it's good for you to be up here thinking on, on your level about what to do about this city, but you need to get down where the citizens are. So, and think about the people who would like to see more waterfront, have access to it. And that includes a lot of these schoolchildren up in the upper part of the city, and the only way they can get down to the waterfront is to take a long bus ride.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
Okay, my time's up.
Thank you.
But like I say, take the time to study and really learn the problems.
We're now at new business.
Nothing, sir.
Mr.?
Nothing, sir.
Madam?
Nothing, sir.
I am first tonight.
Oh, could I? On the new business, I'd motion.
Sure.
Okay. It has come to my attention that state offices will be closed on Friday, July 5th, 2019. The 4th of July is on a Thursday. I move that we give city employees off on Friday, July 5th as an additional holiday.
Second.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Moved in second. Any discussion? I have some discussion on that. Historically, we have allowed the city manager to make that recommendation with consultation with council. It would be my recommendation, this is just me personally, I have not talked to the manager. It would be my recommendation that we go back to that, so that this does not look like a political move. She is the manager. She hires and fires everyone in the city, and I think it's a management decision that should be recommended to council. And that's my talk on that. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vic?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Councilwoman Cherry?
I'm going to say four, and thank you, Mayor Price, for bringing that back to our attention.
Councilman Harris?
Same, thank you again, and four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Motion carry, seven, zero.
Well, I'd just like to make comment. I voted for, I supported, but with all due respect, Madam Manager, nothing about it, in my opinion, has anything to do with, it's about our city employees, so I don't want you to feel like it's out of disrespect.
And I did speak with the manager.
As I was saying, the, um, I would like to thank.
Right direction for our citizens, our, our young people who know that from this investment, they are valued. We as a community are valued and valued people, so I, I say thank you. And all of the hard work from all of the departments who came together, this was really teamwork, a team effort to be able to get this grant. And thank you to our chief and his team for so eloquently leading our HUD Secretary, Ben Carson, into our city. They were out early hours, making sure he was secure, but this, I just thank God for this opportunity for new housing, small businesses in the area, people who normally would not have a chance to gain economic equity in, in this city or in America. This is a time for them to be, and I just thank God for this opportunity for this $30 million grant. Also, want to remark about being a child growing up in the keeper era. June 1st, I want to remind everybody is Clean the Bay Day. A Bay Foundation has several sites. I'll be at Huntington Park, cleaning the, the area, keeping our waterways clean, plastic and things, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. They have several sites. If you go on their website, you will find the site across, probably across Virginia, but here in Newport News. So remember, June the 1st, Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, is Clean the Bay Day. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wood?
Yes. Again, having written grants and read a lot of them for the government when I was at Hampton University, the key word is about, and, and Dr. Carson used that key word yesterday. He said, "It's about persistence." And that's what our city manager, I think, really, is a perfect example of persistence, knowing and sticking to your guns and going and finding what, what they're responding to that. So I, I thank, congratulate you all, and Ms. Vic, I know how happy you are, and I am for the city. I was privileged to speak to a men's Bible group at First Baptist Church on Saturday, and so many of them asked me a lot of things about the city. One of the things they would like to see is some of our meetings held in other parts of the city, so that many of the people from the North District would have to sometimes drive 40 miles, round trip, to speak for three minutes. So I have asked the city manager to look into that, and she is doing so. I hope that we will be more accessible, because I value what you have to say, whether it's good to me or not, but I do value it, and I want us to be transparent, and I want us to be a city that works together and for the good of all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cherry?
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We're glad that you're here, and we thank you for all of your voices that you have expressed of concerns and your ideas, and we appreciate you being here tonight. I was out of the city yesterday for documentary taping on Newport News that we hope will come to pass in the fall, so I was not able to be here yesterday when they were doing the CNI presentation. The taping was at the same time, so I apologize to everyone for not being here, but I was on city business. But I'd like to say congratulations to the city manager, the planning staff, and all of the partners and staff who helped us successfully receive that $30 million grant. It's something that was much needed, and I do believe that we're going to see a transformation in the southeast community. Madam City Manager, I just want to leave you these words of encouragement, that the race is not given to the swift, nor the battle to the strong, but to the one that endures to the end. And you did not give up. You would not give up, so I want to say thank you for having that endurance for us. We appreciate you so much.
Yes.